Good morning. We will call the July 2nd, 2024 City Council meeting to order. Good Councilman Johnny Dodd is going to lead us in our application and pledge. You would please stand.
Father God, you just said to our thank you, Lord, for our day that we gave us today, Lord. Why we ask you to just give us the opportunity to make the right decision, Lord, for our city, Lord. Why we ask you just watch over our city, Lord, and bless our officers, bless our staff. And, Lord, just give us just a way to just do your work, Lord. Lord, it's all about you, Lord. It's all about our citizens that we work for, Lord. Just make sure, Lord, we're just doing what we should be doing to please you in your name, with at least the name of Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three is roll call. And Marquesia, thanks to all council members present. I afford approval of the minutes from the June 4th, 2024 council meeting and June 20th special call meeting. Those minutes were emailed out. There are no additions or corrections. They stand approved as read. We have a couple of recognitions and proclamations. First up, we have our Parks and Recreation Month. And the proclamation reads, whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Jackson, Parks and Recreation, whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of community members who live near and visit local parks. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illness such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's disease. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for athletics, popular sports, swimming pools, and many other activities designated to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation is an advocate for healthy eating, nutritional education, and community gardens. Whereas Parks and Recreation program and education activities such as after-school programming, youth and adult sports are critical for growth and development. Whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the natural beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, whereas the city of Jackson recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Scott Congrime, mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for your support of the Recreation and Parks Department. We thank you for this proclamation and recognizing the importance of parks and recreation for providing quality of life, leisure activities for all the citizens of Jackson. It goes without saying that parks and recreation facilities and programs are vital to the lifeblood of any community. I've given the council a mission statement, and I'd like to read our mission statement. Recreation Parks Mission Statement: To be an accountable steward of public recreation facilities and other recreation resources, and an efficient provider of quality wholesome leisure services to benefit the mind, body, and spirit of all the citizens of Jackson, Tennessee. That is what we do. And the people standing before you are dedicated to ensuring that mission statement holds true. They are as far. We have Ms. Cynthia Lyons, who is the executive secretary. She does all of our invoices and park permits. She's very vital to our department. Ms. Bridget Parham, who is superintendent of programming. Bridget handles all of our senior activities across the city. She also chairs the Christmas parade. You know, we put on the Christmas parade. We partner with the International Festival of Movies in the Park. She does a wide range of programming for our department. Kristy David, who's our Parks Operation Manager. Kristy has been with us a few years here, about three years, and tell you, I call her the Grant Hawk. There's a grant to be gotten. She's going to find it and apply for it. And she is a hawk, a Southside Hawk. But as we say, she should have been a cougar. But we've received over millions of dollars of grants. She's upgraded our park maintenance program. We partner. Let me say this. This mayor has come and he has committed us and commanded us in the sense that he asks us to really partner with departments and to work with departments, and we have some great partners in this city with the Maintenance Department, the Groundskeeping Department, the Street Department, Public Works. We all work together to make sure our parks are safe and clean. The police departments, we thank you. We thank you. Then we have Whitney Lawhorn Billensley, who's our Community Outreach Liaison. She's our face of our department. We've got a new logo that we're going to be showing here when we present it. Ms. Melissa Cockro, Director of Registration. All of our registration goes through her. Revenue, all of that handles that, so that's her. I didn't know this person's first name for a long time. Deborah P. Wee Williams. She's at the South Jackson Community Center. And if you haven't visited the South Jackson Community Center lately, you're missing the treat. She's done a great job out there in South Jackson, Melissa. We have Mr. Mark Mingelhoff. He's the superintendent of Athletics in the Westwood Center, and he's over all of athletic programming, and he does a great job in running the Westwood Center. We have Heath Harpo. Heath is the Athletic Administrator, handles all of the tennis center, tennis complex stuff, soccer, old holster stuff. So that's great. Then we have Mr. Terry Smith, Superintendent of T.R. White Sports Play. T.R. White is a landmark institution in East Jackson and does a great job. Mr. David McCall. David came on to the NED, and the NED is a wonderful, wonderful facility and amenity for this city. He has diverse programs, and it's a great place for people to come and enjoy and have leisure time. Mr. John Meyer, the manager of the Fairgrounds. If you drive by the Fairground now and see that beautiful white and black, we've changed all that and got colors that really look great. And he's doing a great job. He's rented every week. How many years out now?
Way out.
Way out. Jason Contra. Jason is the Director of the West Tennessee Healthcare Sports Play, and he's done a great job. Participation is up, and we've got some things that we plan on doing that are going to make us more competitive with some other cities. And we appreciate Jason for the work he does. Ms. LaShawn Hicks is at the Civic Center. We lost a manager of the Civic Center, and he left at a critical time. We had this USA, Miss America Volunteer, Miss Volunteer America pageant and all of that. And she stepped right in and took that, but effective this Saturday, she will be the manager of the Civic Center. Bruce Bond. He is the manager of the West Tennessee Farmers Market. How many years in a row we've been voted the best farmers market in West Tennessee? About fifteen years running. So, and their staff, some of their staff is with them. So these are the people. And our department is committed to making sure that Jackson is a leader in providing quality facilities and leisure activities for all the citizens and in every district. Our city is at an inflection point in terms of funding the needs of a growing city. Now, however, it's not the time to move downward or backward, but upward and forward. Become stalled or in approach to funding not only parks and recreation, but all of the city departments. A recent study projected growth in the next twenty-three years due to the blue oval of a population growth of Madison County of twelve thousand to nineteen thousand people. The majority of that growth would be ages between twenty and sixty-four. Again, I want to thank the mayor and the council. Since being in office, the mayor has really, really supported Parks and Recreation. Over the last five years, we have seen tremendous improvement in our parks. We have updated all of our playgrounds, thanks to the great work of Kristy and Grants and et cetera, and Capitol Projects. We have two areas now that we have to get new playgrounds. That's Kate Campbell and also Centennial. And after that, all of our playgrounds will be up to date, and that is a major accomplishment. So we need you to support Parks and Recreation. I'd like to thank our wonderful board members. I don't see any board members here, but our board members are: Our chairperson is Allison Feig, Robert Starr, Mark Winston, Amy Jones, and Paul Taylor. And our councilman liaison is a great liaison is Mr. Councilman Russ McKelvey. Again, we want to say thank you, and our department is truly trying to serve this city. We're pushing for months by staff to have a certified recreation park professional. We have two on staff. I'm a certified recreation park professional. Kristy is a certified recreation park professional, but also she is a certified park playground inspector. We used to have to pay that out to someone. That saved us a lot of money because we have someone on staff. So again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. These are the people that make Parks and Recreation work.
All right, thank you all. And one more recognition before we move on. I want to recognize the Enlightened Males Program of the Theta Iota Chapter of the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. Guys, y'all stand up. Welcome. Glad to have you here today. Now we move on to invitation of public comments. So we got one here and Mr. Joel Alexander. Did you sign up for public comment? Or you just signed in? Okay, you don't want to speak? Or you want to speak? Give me a timer here in case you run long.
I'm speaking on number two about the rezoning on Ohumbolt Road. That's just an existing infield piece of property that's adjacent to some RG2 property. We built a section in it last year, about fifteen lots in it. We're proposing to build about sixty more lots. They'll be same-type houses, brick-to-car garage, sixteen, eighteen hundred square foot, and that's what we're proposing on this project.
All right. Did you say sixty more houses or sixteen?
Sixty.
Okay, thanks.
It'll be done in about three phases.
And about the price range of those houses? The price range of those houses?
That's scary, but right now homes are going anywhere from a hundred and seventy-eight to two hundred and eighty dollars a square foot right now, so.
Which would be?
Two seventy-five to three hundred.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we go on to first reading. Item one. Consideration of a Plan of Service Proposed Annexation and Zoning for an Area Refused to Extinction Area Submitted by Alexander J.M. Wanamaker III, comprising of thirty-point-five acres more or less located in nineteen eighty-four Highway Seventy East. The proposed zoning is I-2 Light Industrial District.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
You have the materials pertinent to this rezoning request in your packet. This was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and they are recommending it to you. This is an area that we have considered other annexation requests. It's in the seventy, out Seventy East, just south of where four twelve comes in and Ridgecrest intersection. It's an area devoted to industrial uses, and this is just a continuation of that land use pattern.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item two is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at four eighty block of Ohumbolt Road from RS one single-family residential to RS two single-family residential district comprising of eighteen-point-nine-two acres more or less. How move? Do we accept?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from council? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you.
Move on to second reading. Item one is consideration of an ordinance to amend Title Ten, Chapter One of the Code of Ordinances, Animals.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item two is consideration of an ordinance to amend Appendix B of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Jackson, Tennessee, the OSHA Plan.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from council? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item three is consideration of an ordinance to amend Title Fifteen, Chapter Two, Section Two-O-For of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jackson, Compliance by Trucks.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from council? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item four is consideration of an ordinance to close a portion of an unnamed alley between one thirty-six and one forty-six Campbell Street.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from council? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item five is consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the Official Zoning Ordinance of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, Article Five, Specific Regulations, Sections One through seventeen, Sections Twenty-three, Twenty-two, and Twenty-four relative to current design guidelines adopted by the City of Jackson.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion from council? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item six, consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the Official Zoning Ordinance of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, Article Six, Regulations Applying to Specific to Several or to All Districts, Section Seven, Customary Home Occupation.
So moved.
We have a motion? Second. Any discussion from council? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Move on to new business. Item one is election of a vice mayor, and I'll call on our current vice mayor.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, well, first thing I want to say, thank you to City Council for last year trusting me to serve as your vice mayor. It's been an honor and a privilege. Thankfully, I haven't had to pinch-hit as the mayor of the city, but it's been great working with you all and leading the agenda review meetings. And at this time, I would like to nominate Councilmember Johnny Dodd to serve as the next vice mayor, effectively vacating the current treasurer's position.
All right, we have a nomination for Councilman Dodd. Any other nominations?
I was going to nominate Councilman Stovall.
Okay. Are you still going to?
I am going to. I'd like to make a motion to do that.
All right, so we have a nomination for Councilman Dodd, nomination for Councilman Stovall. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, so this is what we're going to do. We're going to call him in order of alphabetical order. You can only vote for one. Can't vote for both of them. So we're going to call, vote for Councilman Dodd. Voting for Councilman Dodd. You can't vote for both. You can just vote for one.
Five yes, three no, and one abstain.
All right, and then we call a vote for Councilman Stovall.
Three yes, one no, and four abstain.
All right, Councilman Dodd will be elected vice mayor, and by, do you accept?
Actually, I accept.
And you have something else to do as well?
Yes. I would like to resign my position as treasurer. If I could, I'd like to nominate Ms. Julie Hope.
All right, you have? But you can't serve both positions. You don't have a treasure until next month? Wait a minute, Louis?
That's legal.
Yeah. Louis, since he's resigned his position as treasurer, to be elected vice mayor. Pop quiz. Do what? It would create a vacancy as treasurer. As far as the appoint, we had to wait till next month?
Not only dependent.
Okay, all right.
Let me just say this. If we wait to do it next month, I know it's okay. If we do it today, we'll have it on the agenda.
Right. Okay.
I make the motion to wait till next month.
Wait, wait. No, we can't do that. Can't wait till next month to accept his resignation. We can, we can accept his resignation today as treasurer and then appoint on the agenda, appoint a new treasurer at the August meeting.
I move we accept the resignation.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept the resignation. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed seven to one no and one abstain.
Okay, all right. Item two is consideration of a thirty-day delay in proceeding on the shelter as related to location submitted by Councilwoman Busby. Call on Councilwoman Busby.
Well, the reason why I put this on, back on the agenda, was because I've had business owners reach out to me. I thought some of those business owners would be here today to speak on public comment, to give them an opportunity downtown to share thoughts, concerns. I know that there have been roundtables and smaller groups that have met, but I wanted to give the business owners an opportunity to maybe perhaps come up with another plan or location, and so that's the reason why it was on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I ask Ms. Lauren Kirk to come visit with us for a moment?
She can't say.
So we've got, so I guess questions pertaining to construction, the contract. We have Mr. Henson here also. We have Amy McDonald from Tennessee Homeless Solutions and Dr. Lake. We have Latonya Faison from Housing Authority as well. So depending on what your questions are aimed at, I think we can possibly get it answered today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Kirk, briefly, could you kind of walk us through the timeline of where we started, where we are today, and also touch on the meeting that was held at Hub City Brewery a month or two ago as far as what it was like?
Yes, I'll do my best. Just fair warning, I currently a little bit visually impaired, so I can't really see y'all's faces at a kayak can accident on Saturday. So if you're trying to get my attention, you might have to just speak up. Anyway, so this process all started, I guess, actually in December of 2020. Unfortunately, there was a death of an unhoused person in our community. And at the time, we were able to utilize the Civic Center for an emergency warming shelter due to the pandemic and not being able to have events there. And I would, Amy McDonald would know more of these specifics, but I think we were serving around a hundred folks each night. So from that process of seeing how it worked to pretty much have an operating shelter, the city committed to trying to find a way to have a dedicated shelter to prevent these situations moving forward. So we were able to utilize some HUD funding, which was two different grants, and then we also have a little bit of reserved ARPA funding to put toward this project. So we released an RFP first to have an operator for the shelter because we knew that the operator would be able to speak into the operations, much more like Whitney has been involved with animal care. You need to note, the person who knows the business and the operations needs to be able to say, this is how it should be built. So we got the operator brought on board. We released an RFP for a construction manager, which Henson is our construction manager, Mr. Kerry Henson, alongside TLM as the architect designing the building. So we went through one design process. It was a little bit too expensive for what we were willing to pay. We were trying to get the design down as much as possible to the funds that we had available. And again, Mr. Henson's here if you have specifics on the constructions, construction side of it. So this was, again, 2021. So we went into last year with another redesign process, bid it out, and it was actually more costly than the current design that we're on because we were looking at an innovative way to utilize shipping containers, and that ultimately did not work out for us with subcontractor bids. It's going to be more expensive. So then we landed on this third design, and mind you, we're three years into a restriction on grants that at this point, HUD would have really liked to have spent fifty percent of the funds. We have until September of 2025 on one of the grants to spend the funds, and then I believe in 2026 to spend the rest of it. But that doesn't mean, you know, that there are indicators that they look at along the way. So to date, we've spent, I think, around two-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars, and that's been on these three different redesigns. It's been on site preparation, environmental testing. That's something that has to be done. If a new site was selected, you have to spend more money on that, and they look for specifics. So sometimes when you think about rehabbing an existing building, it ends up being more expensive than it is to build new construction. So where we're at today, and I know it's been a little bit long, but I'm trying to capture all the details. I'm remembering, and I hate to belabor this because I know we've had this conversation, but we've bid out the subcontractors, and that's what we got the numbers that we presented to the Guaranteed Maximum Price Contract in May to you all to lock in a price that we knew we would have to pay whatever outside of the grant. And we're just waiting on the rest of the funding to go ahead to do the construction. I hope I captured all your questions.
And I wanted to also ask about the meeting that was held at Hub City Brewing recently. Could you tell us a little bit about that and its result?
Yes. So some of the downtown business owners reached out with some questions about the project. I guess not realizing, I mean, we've had public meetings on it. This was included in the LRK discussions when we were doing downtown planning. I was project manager on both projects, and they're very well aware of it, but we've had meetings about it, but they wanted to have another meeting just to get some Q and A, and so we came. We invited different representatives from the social service agencies. Tennessee Homeless Solutions was there. Area Relief Ministries was there. RIFA was there. And we had a great discussion of what I felt like, what everyone who walked away said they felt like, a better understanding of how this would operate, clearing up some misconceptions, because I know that there was some confusion at the time around building capacity versus what would actually be staffed. And also, you know, we're talking about human beings here, and so sometimes when it gets into social services, there get to be some fears and misconceptions when you're not in the industry. And there's, you know, some ideas around how these folks would be treated, and so we were able to get some clarification on what would be the operating protocol and why that location and why next to RIFA. And, you know, at the end of the day, there are going to be different opinions on where it should be located and why, but this was why we felt like it was the best location, and we tried to explain that, and we felt like we had good consensus and good conversation that day. That was at the end of May. So it was May twenty-second was that meeting.
Ms. Kirk, so the public can understand the vast concerns with the homeless and explain to them, we've heard it, but explain to them what is going to happen after the ninety days and how the mental health and
That's a Ms. McDonald question.
jobs, how that's going to continue to help and to make these people.
Hold that thought because we're going to get Ms. McDonald up here because she can answer that question.
Great, okay.
Am I asked you to re-ask that question?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Morning.
Thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
I'm going to sound a little preachy at first, but mental health is such a big problem across our country, and it's something that we can't address by ourselves. So would you express the different components and how you are going to help these people? If it's education, clothes, mental health issues, how they are going to step down from the ninety days and stay with these people? And the different, the different things that you all are already doing. I see Ms. Vicki here too. Different things that y'all are already doing.
So the shelter will be ran as a program, so the end result in everyone's exit is to permanent housing destinations of some sort. So while they're, someone can stay at the shelter for up to ninety days, that does not mean that that person needs the full ninety days. So it'll just be a case-by-case basis on the needs assessments that's done at intake and coming into the shelter. Not everyone has mental health issues. Survey about a year and a half ago on, in the encampments, and we interviewed all of the homeless and that we could find, and sixty percent of Jackson's homeless population had some sort of mental health issue that goes anywhere from depression to schizophrenia. Eighteen percent had self-acknowledged that they had substance abuse issue. But that leaves that forty percent that, you know, were just down on their luck or part of their mental health is the reason that they became homeless. So the program will be run in that ninety-day period. We'll do needs assessment in the beginning, connections to supportive services such as mental health. We've got something worked out with substance abuse programs to come in and do classes and the, the one thing about the location, if I could say, is that the money from HUD is non, for non-congregate shelter. So that means that that portion of the bill So that means that that portion of the billing, there cannot be like any, there's no commercial kitchen. So all of the rooms are kind of like little mini hotel rooms that have their own little mini fridge and microwave. There's no, you know, it's for non-congregate. So that's why we looked at the location that we did because it's only three, four blocks away from RIFA. So if someone wants a hot meal, it's a short distance for them to walk. Right, so the, the end goal for the shelter is permanent housing and exit destinations. Our agency has a two percent resi-
Recidivism.
A return to homelessness rate after two years. So that's very low, but I think-
How much was it?
Two percent per THS.
That's across all of West Tennessee.
Yeah, and across all of West Tennessee, I think is six percent. And, and I, I give that credit to the programs that have strong case management, support services. People are not exited until they're ready to be exited. They have that ongoing assistance that they need, so they don't come back into the homeless system.
Question. How, how do you deal with the mental health? I, I missed that. To where they're, if they're getting medication, they stay on medication?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll have a, we'll have it worked out with Pathways that someone will come to the shelter, and then we will provide transportation for people when they have appointments outside of the shelter.
I've got a question. Is, in this program, what's the plan to, I mean, I know that we're going to, the end result is permanent housing, but what's the plan to get them working and to be able to stand on their own two feet?
Right.
Is there one?
So like I said, it'd be a case-by-case basis. We'll work with American Job Center for those who are able to work. Those who are unable to work, the Department of Mental Health, Tennessee Department of Mental Health and SAMSS, they have a program called SOAR, which is like a fast-tracked SSI, SSDI. So getting disability benefits, SSI goes from two-plus years to ninety days. So we've had great success with that.
What happens when that two-plus years is done?
I'm sorry.
That's the wait, Ms.?
That's reducing the wait time.
Reducing the wait time to get it back.
Yeah, so the approval time can, you know, can be two years plus for someone. With the SOAR, it's ninety days, around ninety days, once the application is submitted. Mm-hmm, with the American Job Center and workforce development, yeah.
Councilwoman Lawrence?
I have not met anyone that was not in favor of this party, project. The businessmen, I think what they're trying to do is to make it as good as possible and to make sure we get the bang, biggest bang for our buck. So I don't think there's any discussion about not doing it. But I do have a question. Operating costs after it's built, how much will that be per year?
Well, it'll be the, on the size of the building at the end, you know, which design is, we did an estimate at first, which was about eighty, eighty-five thousand a year.
Operate eighty-five thousand, and where would those funds come from?
Federal and state funding, private donations, fundraising.
Is that a year-by-year grant or are there any twenty-year grants?
No, that's a year-by-year grant with the, with the state. The state is a year-by-year grant.
Now what now?
Not on the city. The city will not-
Okay, but, but this is what we're going to get. If those grants disappear, would the city not have to pick up the tab?
No, that just makes my job a lot harder in, in fundraising. I mean, I'm not going to close the shelter, so.
I have a question, possible. I think we are in support of our business. We don't want the homeless issue downtown. But maybe the money that we've already invested in the project, would they be willing to give us that money back? Help us raise the money to recruit that money back? Helping us to raise more money since they don't want that location, to move the location, you know, to a lower location? To, you know, we're trying to work with them. But would they be willing to invest into this project with the city?
Very question. Councilwoman Meehan?
Vicky Lake may be involved in this question. If we delay this for thirty days and look at it, will that impact the grant, the one point four million dollar grant?
I've asked Kerry to also just go ahead and talk about the subcontractor delays and the impact on that because that impacts overall cost. Now, the grant piece of it, as I shared with you all, sent over via email, HUD is already a little bit concerned that we have not already spent fifty percent of the funds. And the longer we get delayed, the more that concern grows. So yes, is it completely in jeopardy? I don't think so. It's kind of a question around if it's, is it possible or is it advisable? If you want more specifics, I can work with Latonya on getting that information.
My concern is, does it delay us in getting to where we get the balance of that? Or if we have it already, we have to give it back? Does it, does it throw us off?
Ultimately, if we do not move forward with this project at all, we will have to pay back the grant funds that have already been spent, yes.
But if we delay it thirty days, there's, we're not endangering the one point four million?
The, the grant, the revenue piece, but I think Kerry's going to talk about the expense side of the contract that, with the subcontractors.
Okay.
He's going to talk about.
We bid the project on August twenty-sixth, I'm, excuse me, March twenty-sixth, with a instructions that all the bidders had to hold their bid for sixty days. So obviously, we're at about ninety right now. But we did, in the last couple of weeks, we, we have called all the major subcontractors and confirmed that they would be willing to hold their price based on the project being approved in this current session or timing. And they all said they would. Now, that may throw, that will throw us into, if we delay it another month, we'll need to go back to them and ask again. They have that right. They do have the, the right to, to change their pricing, but I feel fairly confident that we'll be able to hold the pricing where it is. No one has indicated or thrown up a red flag to us that they're in trouble for the price increase from their suppliers at this point.
Let me ask a question to my colleague, Councilman, Councilwoman Busby. The persons who asked you to put this on the agenda, were they aware they could come today and speak to it, speak about it?
They were.
And did you expect them to come?
I thought more would be here, yes.
All right. Well, I think we just should proceed with the project. You know, I don't see why we need to keep delaying this, and so I would be against the, against the delay.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, so I, yeah, so we reject the request of the thirty-day delay and that we proceed with our deliberate speed to get this project concluded.
I second that. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from council?
Yes, I, I'd like to say, a lot of things have changed in the last two or three years, and they're still concerned, and I would like to see us have a unified study of this. We're talking about four hundred and forty-five dollars a square foot, I believe, if it's seven thousand, seven hundred with three point four million dollars. We're talking about having to borrow money to do it. When this was first presented, we were not going to borrow money or raise this tax to do this, but now that was how we're going to fund it. The location, I never thought of, but it is important to our business people. So I think that should be looked at. I'm not saying change it, but it should be looked at. And the second thing is, I'm a little concerned that we don't have permanent financing for operation. So I think a thirty-day moratorium to look at it would help answer some of these questions. It might not change anything. It would at least give input from the committee or from the community.
All right, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, may I just ask Councilmember Dodd? I didn't quite understand this question.
Well, I was actually, the business people downtown are concerned about this project. And, you know, in the past, they have came together and raised money for projects like this. Would they be willing to invest in this project for us? You know, we have lost, you said, right at two hundred thousand dollars or more, you know? What we spent in relation to things, but are they willing to invest in this project? If they want us to change the location or to, you know, look at this project for the, because we don't want to lose money. And that's what we could be doing. Would they be willing to invest in this project? I mean, we have-
Councilwoman Meehan?
Amy, would you address Larry's concern regarding-
Yeah, the cost.
Permanent funding, yeah.
So, well, the cost of this shelter, first, I'd like to say, in a ten-year period at minimum, the shelter is going to serve a thousand people. So if you took that divided by the cost of building the shelter and then half the city's part, it's about seventeen hundred dollars per person just in jotting. So, you know, over time, it's reasonable. You know, this is, this HUD in the past has not funded shelters as far as construction acquisition. So this really is probably the only time in my lifetime that, that the city of Jackson will have this opportunity to be able to build a shelter for men. With the Supreme Court ruling last week, with it being lawful to arrest people in, sleeping in public places, HUD, in my opinion, looking forward in experience, they're going to have to start funding operations of shelters because of this new law, so.
And let me just say, I want to thank you for what you do. You have worked extremely hard in some other counties and all, and I appreciate that. It's a problem we need to address, and I particularly love that permanent home is the solution. So I'm, don't think I'm negative towards the project. I've just got some reservations.
Yes, I understand.
I have two questions.
Sure.
The first one is, are there going to be anything put in place where we don't have habitual people coming through? Like, I know that the end goal is permanent housing, but let's say we get them there and then they're kind of released, per se, and then two years they're coming back. Like, are we going to have anything in place that doesn't continue the same people using the system over and over?
I think, Ms. Vicky-
I believe.
Wasn't she, weren't you all taking the names, trying to get a register, be able to follow this data?
Yeah, Councilmember Holt's asking about the program once the shelter is built, so that's an operation.
Oh, I thought that would tie into that, how they could keep up with them.
Right, so some of the participants that stay in the shelter will go on to community of care housing programs, which is with Vicky Lake and a group of agencies that have these programs, and they'll have ongoing case management. So the, what the shelter is going to do is, we already do that now, okay? The shelter is going to offer that place to stay while we're doing that. As management. Right, and, you know, we did an outreach event at RIFA a couple of weeks ago, and we went out and there was a group of twenty-plus of us, and we did interviews with the homeless and got people connected with services. Everybody got assigned a case manager or a person to be their person to help guide them through into some type of permanent housing. You know, it, the system works. The shelter is a piece that we have not had and is very important to the system that we have.
And then my second question is, you mentioned fundraising. Have y'all had to do any, or have y'all even looked at any fundraising to help cover cost of building?
Of building? No, we have not, because technically the city and the JHA have been kind of taking care of that. So our, our focus is operations.
All right, any other questions from council? Counsel, please vote. The, the motion is to reject the thirty-day delay.
Five yes, two no, and one abstain.
Thank you. Item three is consideration of the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program Voucher Application pre-approval by the United States Department of Energy.
So move.
We have a motion. And a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item four is consideration of a cybersecurity grant to the state of Tennessee.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item five is consideration of a resolution authorizing participation in cooperative purchasing agreements with the U.S. General Services Administration.
So move.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item six, consideration of a contract with Grisham Smith for complete street study.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I wasn't there Thursday night. Can you just go over this a little bit with me, please? Thank you.
This is a, some money that we're going to use that comes through our, our transportation planning grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation. So it's not, it's not a new grant, it's not new funds. It's just using a portion of the funds we already received to study our streets across the city and determine what we could do to make them more safe, to provide safer pedestrian crossings and other facilities to enhance the streets, to make them usable by all modes of transportation.
Is there a matching the city does?
Well, the PL funds that we receive from T-DOT are fifteen percent match anyway. But mostly that match comes in the form of hours that the city pays us anyway, and we get reimbursed for those. So it's, it's really, that's how the, the funding works.
Thank you. So move.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Thank you.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
Item seven is consideration of a contract with, let's say, Wright Chels BBQ, Soul Food and More, the operation of grill restaurant at the farmer's market.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
Item eight is consideration of a resolution to approve Community Development Annual Action Plan 2024, 2025.
So move.
We have a motion?
Excuse me, I would like to hear-
We have a motion on the table, it's wait for a second.
Second.
Second, okay, all right, now.
Discussion, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Latonya and Mark?
Good morning.
Good morning, y'all.
Okay, so annually, the city receives Community Development Block Grant and Home Grant funding to provide affordable housing and services to our low-income community. Normally, I would have presented this plan to you in May, but of course, we know the federal budget was delayed. This year, on the Community Development Block Grant funding, the funding was level pretty much. We'll receive six hundred nine thousand, four hundred seventy-four dollars. The home funds were cut by about twenty-five percent, so we're receiving three hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred, one hundred thirty-eight dollars as opposed to last year was four hundred twelve thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars. On the Community Development Block Grant funding side, we're pretty much funding our same activities as last year, and you all have the budgets in front of you. We, we fund public service activities. We fund the Section 108 loan repayment, which takes up about forty percent of our allocation each year, minor repair activities as well. On the home funds, we are required to set aside funding for community housing development agencies each year, which we fund Jonah Affordable Housing, Southwest Community Development Corporation, and Habitat for Humanity to provide affordable housing in the community, whether it be new construction or acquisition and renovation of properties for rental or home buyers. We also, we added one activity because of the lack of affordable housing. We want to reprogram some prior year funding that has not been expended yet and do infill housing. This is where we'll do an application process, opening up to developers or other nonprofit agencies that can leverage some funding towards infill housing. And the goal is the Omen Arena area, because there's quite a few vacant lots over there, to do single-family housing or duplex housing. Any questions on the-
Your twenty-five percent that you lost, is the prior funding going to be able to help you meet that maybe? Or are you still confident?
Yes, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all.
Sure.
What's the overall total grant that we're talking about here for all these programs?
The total is about, if you add those two, it's nine hundred forty thousand.
Okay, now, the Section Eight program, we're not in that.
Section Eight is not.
Okay, how much is in the Section Eight? Every, everything is what I'm looking for, the total of cost.
Okay, and the community, community development is separate from JHA specifically.
So we're going to talk about that later?
If you so choose.
So this, this budget- So this, this budget is specifically these, this funding here, less than 1 million.
I want, I want to ask you, uh, in my district, Gobon Dupree Street, there are about four or five houses that are being built now. Uh, any of the funds that come through your program being used to build those houses?
No, uh, that is Southwest CDC and they have a THDA grant to build those. Now, we do have those Section 108 funds, some monies were set aside for them to do. Those first three or four homes were, were out of the Section 108 funds and they have about close to 400,000 left to build still on some lots on Dupree.
All right. Are you have other questions from council?
Were you going to add something to that?
No, 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 I was just telling her they are total with us. They, we funded, uh, some of their housing before Jack, uh, threw the CPG home program route.
Okay, thank you.
All right, council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine is consideration of committee and board appointments. Jackson Housing Authority, appointment of Reverend Ernest Polk to fulfill an expired term of Dr. Drake Temple.
So moved.
Do you like him, Mark?
Yeah, he's good.
Uh-huh.
We have a motion and a second from Councilman Busby. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
The Housing Commission, the appointment of Karita Cole to fulfill the unexpired term of Vanessa Bullock.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item 10, budget minutes less than 10,000. Item 11, consideration of invoices over 10,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
No further visits coming forward to council. Meeting is adjourned.